Eva, are we ready? Okay. All right, welcome. Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started with our study session. Tonight on the study session, we just have one item, and that is the GP 2312 and the, so general plan 2312 and zoning 2304 for the residents at the ranch. And I believe Veronica, you're on it?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Veronica Gonzalez, Principal Planner, and I'll be presenting the residences at the ranch for you. So the request is approximately 39 acres located near the southwest corner of Elliott and Power Roads. This is actually a separate 39 acres out of the larger 302 acre ranch site that you saw earlier in October where you had made, where you had acted upon the request for a major general plan amendment. So the existing land use on this property is an interesting and unique zoning pattern. What I'm intending to show you here is what the initial proposed and new land use and zoning requests are in relation to that which is existing. This was actually the initial proposal made by the applicant. The proposal included a minor general plan amendment to go from industrial, general office, and general commercial to residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre, residential 15 to 25 dwelling units per acre, and general commercial. The rezoning component of it included rezoning from light industrial, business park, and general commercial to multifamily medium, multifamily high, and mixed-use large.
Veronica, can I have you pull the mic a little closer to you? You're fading out there. Thanks.
How's that? However, there has been a revised proposal that will be considered. This revised proposal, as you may recall, the major general plan amendment and rezoning case that you heard back in October, it was quite a contentious case and received a significant amount of neighborhood opposition. In response to that, the developer has been working with and talking with neighbors in the area and has proposed a development that is intended to buffer the residents of Morrison Ranch from those less desirable industrial-type uses. So the revised proposal includes, again, a minor general plan amendment to go from industrial, general office, and general commercial to residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre and general commercial. And the rezoning component would include going from light industrial, business park, and general commercial to multifamily medium, mixed-use small, and general commercial. So on this next slide here is a, since the last one was kind of small and maybe hard to see, hopefully this is a little bit larger so you can see in context where those areas are going to be placed within the overall ranch area. And again, the intent behind this is to provide a buffer from those future LI uses that were a part of the major general plan amendment from those existing residences within the Morrison Ranch development. And again, this is just to give you some context into the entire area as it relates to the Morrison Ranch and all of the other land uses within the area. So the property is actually located within two areas within the general plan. One is the Power Road Growth Corridor. The general plan encourages mixed-use developments within growth areas of the town. However, higher-density residential components of a mixed-use project must be designed as an integral part of the community and create a distinctive living environment. And then, as we have discussed before, it is also a part of the Morrison Ranch character area. The land use policy of the Morrison Ranch character area does include, does encourage the creation of neighborhoods with a variety of uses and densities so long as they integrate with the overall rural ranch character of the area. So this supplemental for the residences at the ranch did include some preliminary design concepts. Now, the site planning and design and building design for this development will be reviewed under a separate design review application in the future. But the applicant has presented some exhibits to illustrate a design concept, and staff finds the proposed renderings very attractive. However, the zoning request does not include a PAD overlay. And typically, to ensure this type of development or to ensure that future development complies with a certain design concept or theme, a PAD is needed to guarantee that so that that future development does occur in accordance with what is shown in the proposed exhibits. So today, we are requesting input from the commission, number one, on the proposed minor general plan amendment and the rezoning that would allow for this type of multifamily and mixed-use development within this area. And with that, I would take any questions from you.
All right. Thank you, Veronica. Questions? Anybody like to jump in? Commissioner Bianchi.
Thank you, Chair. So Veronica, I think you answered one of my questions when we talked about if mixed use could be a component of this since we kind of saw that a couple of months ago. So it looks like that may be as part of the revised plan here. Was there any discussion or reasoning as to this residential layout or alignment the way it is? As shown tonight?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bianchi, the, what I'll call the north-south portion of the development, which is what would be along the existing Morrison Ranch residents there, this is intended as a buffer from those uses.
And do we know the approximate width of the proposal?
Yes. So the portion that runs north-south, what I'll call the frontage along Elliott Road is about 440 feet wide. And then, as you go south along that area, that length is about 2771, give or take. The portion of the development, that kind of doglegs, east-west, parallel to Elliott Road, that length is about 1,486. And then, for that portion that is parallel to Power Road, that is about 345 feet wide.
And then, do we have any idea yet if, is this going to, request going to be heard concurrently with the larger industrial and GC? Or are these going to be handled separately?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bianchi, so this is a separate application, a separate request from the larger major general plan amendment that you heard back in October. But the intent is for the two to be at town council at the same time.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm assuming there were some meetings with the local residents in the area for this application? How did those meetings go? Did the residents in that area feel more comfortable with having this multifamily buffer between them and the light industrial?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Anderson, yes, there have been ongoing meetings and discussions with the, between the applicant and a kind of core group of the Morrison Ranch residents there. And so this is the result of those many discussions that they've had. There is going to be a follow-up neighborhood meeting where this will then be presented to the larger Morrison Ranch community as a whole. And that will be in the next couple of weeks. We're working on scheduling that at this point.
Okay. So I understand the buffer of the multifamily between the single-family residential and the light industrial. What's the reason for the multifamily along Elliott? Is that supposed to be buffering something? Or is that just something that the developer is doing to add, mix up the use of the entire area?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Anderson, that's my understanding, that it is a component that the applicant has come forward with as a part of the overall development. I don't know if maybe you would prefer to speak with the applicant about this.
No, that's fine. I think you answered the question. Yeah, thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Davis, did you have any? Jump in?
I am formulating. I guess I just want to be sure I understand the location, the location of the multifamily, the general commercial along there, and whether or not the neighbors are on board with that multifamily along Elliott as well coming into the neighborhood, or if commercial was something that was desired. I'm just curious if this is where we're going to, I kind of want to know if the neighbors are accepting of this plan or if we're going to see something different after a neighborhood meeting.
Go ahead, Sean. Yeah, if you want to turn your mic on there, hit the button. Sorry. There you go.
That's it? My, okay. First off, let me say we really appreciate working with Veronica on this. She has been exceptional in working to get this to where it is today, and so we've appreciated working with staff. Secondly, let me say we really appreciate, we have been working with a group of seven neighborhood leaders who are working with us to try to come up with a plan that works. And so those aren't just meetings that we've had, those are going to be continued discussions throughout so that by the time this, both of these applications get to council, we'll have a package that we're hand-in-hand working with the neighbors that we can agree to, they can agree to, and working with staff to make sure this is all done right. And so we've appreciated that. So yes, we are meeting with neighbors, and we continue to meet with neighbors, and will continue to meet with neighbors. The issue of the multifamily, obviously, the stuff along the west side, we've got that open space and that multifamily, that's a two-story multifamily on the top that is intended to buffer that existing Morrison Ranch community there. The multifamily along Elliott, again, was part of the package of negotiations with the neighbors as a buffer along Elliott. The goal is twofold. The first is to create a barrier so that the truck traffic that is going to be generated by the industrial does not go north to Elliott Road. So it creates a physical barrier so that there will be no truck traffic going north to Elliott Road. But all the truck traffic, you'll see the red arrows on this plan, will go out to Power or over to Warner. The second aspect is a visual buffer. Elliott, they wanted to maintain more of a residential character and not a big truck carrier. So you would have not only the commercial along Elliott with restaurants and those type of things along Elliott, but then you would have a second layer of multifamily at three stories, you'll notice on that plan, that would provide that visual buffer. So you'd go from retail to multifamily, and then back in the distance, further back would be the industrial. So it would be a visible buffer as well as a traffic buffer to help maintain Elliott as more of a residential non-commercial traffic feel. That's the intent of that, and that is a specific direction that we've had with the neighbors to include that there as late as last night when we met. So that's why we have it, and that was the deal that we've cut with the neighbors, or worked out with the neighbors.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Bianchi.
I guess, I guess my overall impressions or thoughts are the density kind of concerns me a little bit, but I understand, especially the circulation when we start getting into the site plan and circulation around the site, and once, you know, public safety and solid waste weighs in on that. But that could be a conversation for another day. I do, I buy the argument, I suppose it provides a transition between the uses, especially if we have multi-story residential kind of shielding that from the industrial. I kind of understand that. I don't know, I kind of, I look at this site plan, and it kind of makes me feel like I'm playing that old game of Tetris, you know, where you're shifting the shapes and trying to make them to fit. I guess, this looks like we're just trying to find something, a way to yes and get this to fit. But, but I can understand the discussion for it, but again, the circulation and the density are still something I'm going to probably see how the discussions go.
All right, anybody else? Yeah, Commissioner Gage.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just looking at the picture that's on the screen, and there's a little piece of commercial that looks planned out that on our, in our packet is not planned out. I can't point, but you see where the corner is? There's a long skinny piece that has buildings on it for commercial. So, yeah, thanks. So I'm just wondering, is the rest, is there somewhat of a plan for the rest of that? Because it's somewhat narrow where it's against Elliott Road. And if you've gone that far, do you have some idea how the rest of it's going to play out?
The, great question. The commercial at that location is we're trying to create this destination restaurant-type row or retail row. And I'm not going to go into the whole development plan at the study session, but the goal is to kind of create this pedestrian area between those two red buildings. And then you see the two pink buildings, which are going to be mixed-use, first floor retail, second, third floor multifamily. Then you've got the orange buildings that will also have first floor retail, second and third floor multifamily. And you'll create this, this kind of high-street-type design down, the pedestrian area down the center of those areas. But the focal point is really going to be that, those two retail buildings, or those two restaurant buildings that you identified. And then we tried to mirror that on the other side, on the, on the east of that or below it, to have those restaurant areas as well, to kind of create this whole plaza area where you have lots of restaurants and places to go and sit and have a glass of wine with your partner or take your kids there to play and eat outside and outdoor dining and kind of create this experience in that area. And so that, the reason we've planned that out is because we've been working with the neighbors specifically of how that area would look. And so we've really been focused on how that's going to lay out and look. And a lot of the pictures that we'll bring to you next month, that we showed to the neighbors last night, that literally are wet ink, they're that hot off the press, we'll show you pictures of what we envision that to be and look like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other minor comment that's kind of inconsequential, but the maps in the narrative are square, and north goes to the right. Can we just?
We'll correct that.
Thank you. It was driving me crazy when I was looking at it.
Veronica, can you remind me, it looks like the packet has been updated from what we were given previous to the study session with regards to multifamily, because I've got multifamily high on that north edge. That's changed to multifamily medium? Is that correct?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, the initial request that we received did include a multifamily high component, and that will be changing. That is a part of the request that will be changing as it goes forward when it comes to the commissioners for a recommendation. So yes, what you received in your packet is slightly different than what you're looking at, particularly at this slide.
And remind me again, multifamily medium is 15 to 25 dwelling units per acre?
Mr. Chairman, very close, 14 to 25.
14 to 25. So we're talking 800 units potential in this 32 acres?
So I'm not great at math, but the the acreage for
I ran the numbers last night, so, can I help you out? We, I think we came up with about max of 650 between the two-story and the three-story. Then we're going to have some in the orange buildings on the second and third floor, so there could maybe be up to 700. But in reality, when you lay out the two-story multifamily to get to a density of 25 and still comply with the town's standards is going to be exceptionally difficult. So my guess is you're not going to get near that number.
So maybe 650, 700?
I think absolute max, 650 to 700, I think it's going to be far left once you start complying with the town's design standards for multifamily.
Okay.
Especially limited to two-story. It's tough to get to 25 at two-story.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, Commissioner Davis.
I'd just like to comment that I appreciate all of these changes. It's definitely achieving what I was hoping for for the neighborhood and why I wasn't supportive of it the last time to provide adequate buffering for the residential, the existing residential community. The part that I'm struggling with a little bit is we're going to be bringing in these multifamily units, and they're next to the industrial. I understand that they're coming in, and they're going to understand that this is what's going to be built next to them. But when you look at the, you know, and I know these aren't set-site plans, but when you look at those multifamily along Elliott on that south side, they're, they've got bay doors right there. So I really think, design-wise, that needs to be considered in how we're still creating a livable environment, because otherwise you're going to end up with an apartment complex that's not going to maintain over time and stay a quality development, because it's a rough situation and not an ideal living condition. So I really would like you to make sure that you're looking at those transitions as well to create that living environment that's ideal. So that's what I have.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Fay.
Thank you. Hello? Okay. One of the top three criticisms, and I'm hesitant to, because it sounds like this was worked out with the community, but one of the top three criticisms the community had of the light industrial development was traffic. And I was, I wasn't completely dismissing it because it was truck traffic versus car traffic. It was on the opposite side of the project from the community, but there are trucks. And it just seems to me that we're inviting a pretty significant traffic. Elliott was going to be, there wasn't going to be any major truck traffic coming off on Elliott, as I recall. And now you will have a pretty significant, I actually think we're making traffic worse. And, well, I know we're making traffic worse, but I think we might be making the entire project considerably worse in that regard. And I don't know that people are appreciating that. And I mean, I guess if the fire department signed off on it, assuming there isn't connectivity, you've got some pretty long runs to get way back, especially on that western leg. But if the fire department signed off on it, I guess that's, and then people will have to know what they're buying when they, when they rent way down in the far southern end of the left leg, or the western leg. I'd be concerned if this was coming tonight. I'd want to, I'd want to talk to some of my citizen contacts because I think that this will actually, won't do anything to make traffic better on the rest of the site, but it will make traffic worse on Elliott that I don't know that the Morrison Ranch people are quite as aware of. That's, that's my thought.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? All right. I'm going to share my thoughts on this. And we'll see if I can put them out eloquently to make sense. They make sense in my head. Whether or not they come out in sense, I don't know. I agree 100% with Commissioner Fay. I think that this is actually going to drive additional traffic. We hear continuously, traffic, traffic, traffic. Let's go on the low end, 500 units. 500 units versus the little bit of additional industrial that they're going to get on this. If we left it, I mean, you're going to have tons more traffic. It's all feeding out to Elliott Road. So it's going to make Elliott Road just that much busier. So I have some pretty significant heartburn with that. I'd like to see some studies with regards to what the traffic will look like. Secondly, we're looking at a general plan and a zoning on this. Although the pictures are nice, nice to tell a story, all we're looking at is what is the max capacity that can be set on this property with regards to the zoning. So as much as I appreciate the neighborhood and the community members coming together with the developer and working on this, at the end of the day, this is up to the developer to actually put what they want to put on that property once we approve the zoning. So I'm really hesitant to allow myself down the path of looking at the pictures, although they are very, very enticing, and I like the look of it. We're not at that stage. It not having a PAD filed with it, there's nothing locking you into this. So that, that kind of gives me some angst on it as well. I would say the number one thing that we hear about from residents, if I go down the road of Commissioner Fay, is we have too many apartments in the town of Gilbert. We had a five-acre piece of land that didn't even go to pre-app on the other side of Morrison Ranch that created a firestorm with some very significant, some of them personal attacks with regards to development of additional apartments in the town of Gilbert. We have another plan coming tonight that we'll go to in our general meeting that actually has multifamily on it. And yet, we're looking for another 39 acres, which by the way, happens to be just under the 40-acre requirement to go to a major general plan amendment. So there's some things in my limited knowledge of where we go with development and how we work through things. Again, I do not want to dismiss whatsoever what the developer has done on this. I think that this plan looks great. I do wish that this would have been the first iteration or somewhere close to the first iteration, and we wouldn't have had to deal with what we had to deal with in October and September and November and December and onward, and all of the vile things that were thrown out by some community members that I feel is very unfair attacks on certain individuals. With that, I will end it by saying I appreciate, again, what the community has done to step up and attempt to get something in. With this much general commercial and retail on that corner, additional to the power center that's going in on the north side, I have concerns that we would be able to even fill that general commercial or retail in the event that it shows up. So, so from my perspective right now, I think we've made a huge leap forward. I do have some concerns. I appreciate where it is today. Again, I can't look at the pictures and look at the site plan because that's not before me tonight. I'm looking at, do I want to put multifamily on 39 acres that's currently not zoned for that when I have community members continuously reaching out to me telling me, don't allow any more multifamily in the town of Gilbert? So with that, unless anybody else has anything they'd like to add, Veronica, if you have anything else for us or any other questions?
No, I don't, but thank you very much for the feedback. Appreciate it.
Really appreciate that, and thank you. With that, I don't believe we have anything else on the study session. So we're going to go ahead and discuss the regular agenda items. And Eva, I'm going to look to you to help me in this because I know that there's been a few things that have changed. I believe that we've got, so we'll just kind of run down through it. We've got Stillwater Rivian, which we need to pull to non-consent, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We've got Melody Avenue Buildings, that's on consent. I believe it can stay?
Correct.
Does anybody need that item pulled? All right. Corbell Energy Storage, I believe that item can stay.
Correct.
All right. Anybody need that pulled? All right. From there, we're going to jump down to the non-consent items. We've got the Cobblestone 48. Is there any reason not to push that to non-consent? Do we need to hear on that one?
Samantha, we do need to hear that one? Yes, it has to be her.
So, it's going to stay on non-consent. We've got, no, item number 10, in test, in test, the Shell Building. Sorry, I don't know how to say that. And I believe we need to discuss that one as well, if I remember Samantha. Okay. So, that'll stay on non-consent. And then 11 and 12, we can, can we move those to consent or do we need to hear those, Samantha? Hear? Okay. So, those will stay on non-consent. Okay. With that, we will go ahead and take a break. What time is it? It's 6 o'clock. Let's take a quick five minutes. We'll come back at about 10 after and start our regular meeting. Okay, I think we're ready to get going. All right. I'll go ahead and call us to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll rise. All right. Eva, can I have a roll call, please?
Alternate Gage. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fay?
Here.
Commissioner Blazer?
Here.
Commissioner Bianchi?
Here.
Vice Chairman Munt?
Here.
Chairman Simon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. So, we discussed the agenda. And so, on the agenda, we've got, oh, let's see if I can keep this straight. We have item number seven and number eight on the consent agenda, moving item number six to non-consent. Also on non-consent are nine, 10, 11, and 12. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
As a matter of fact, Chairman, you do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with consent consisting of item seven, DR 22-164, and number eight, DR 22-48, and the non-consent being six, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have a motion by the Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. I've got a second by Commissioner Davis. Please cast your vote. Motion carries. All right. With that, we'll move on to communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Do we have any communications from citizen outside of anything that's on the agenda? Not seeing any? We will move on to the report from council liaison. And is Councilmember September on the line tonight? I mean, Anderson, sorry.
Councilmember Anderson is.
Sorry. Sorry, Councilman Anderson.
No problem, Chair, Mr. Chair. Just very quickly, last night, we did recognize many volunteers in the community. Chairman Simon was there, received a certificate for his years of service in volunteering in the community, but I wanted to recognize each one of you also and thank you for the service that you give to the community. I know that it's often goes thankless, but you do a great work in the community. Two things that we're working on as a council, we've got a couple of subcommittees, one that's working on communications within the community and the other on ethics. And both of these will affect you in one way or another. And so, as we work on those committees in the next upcoming weeks, we'll probably let you know more about that and what we're doing to improve communications and also to clarify ethics as a policy in the, in the town. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. All right. With that, we'll move on to our public hearing consent items. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item be removed on, from consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Do I have a motion to approve the consent?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent, item seven, DR 22-164, Melody Avenue Buildings, one and two, and the, number eight, DR 22-48, Corbell Energy Storage.
All right. I have a motion by the Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Fay. Go ahead and cast your vote. And the vote carries. 7-0. I don't know if I need to say that. Do I need to say that? All right. So, with that, we'll move on to the public non-consent. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. And I've got a couple here. See anybody rushing to bring me another one? So, we're going to go on to item number six, DR 22-143. And Ashley, you are up. It's Stillwater Rivillon.
Chair, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. So, Commissioner Blazer is recusing himself. And Commissioner Gage, are you coming up? Or alternate Gage? Sorry. We'll call you Commissioner at this moment in time. All right. And this is a design review for the 22-143 Stillwater Rivillon. So...
Thank you, Chairman. So, as you mentioned, this is DR 22-134 Stillwater Rivillon. This project is located south of Pecos Road and west of Lindsay Road as outlined on this map in red. I would point out that it's about, it's setback from those arterial intersections. It's setback from Pecos Road about 590 feet and then setback from Lindsay Road 760 feet. So, it is really central to the larger Rivillon development. The area that's kind of highlighted here, that's in full color, that is the, the larger Rivillon development. I will note, as you can see on this next slide, that a couple of those parcels that have the red or the white overlay on them, those are county islands that are not part of the Rivillon development, but still within kind of the center of this site. The property does receive access from Rivillon Boulevard to the south as the primary access point. And then La Arbolita, which you can see on this aerial image, has been constructed on the east side of the site. The area is largely zoned business park for the Rivillon development with regional commercial farther to the west. I will also note that the site is, does have the general plan designation of office as well, which, south of that, those county island pieces, those are, and in our general plan, as office use as well, although any entitlements that they were to bring forward at this point would be within the county. The site itself is a 10.3-acre part of that larger 280 roughly master plan development known as Rivillon. The general plan was changed by town council earlier this year to residential 20 to 50 dwelling units per acre within accompanying rezone that rezoned the site to multifamily high with a PAD. There were some deviations that went along with that request as well as approval of a development plan. So, the map that you see on the screen is the approved development plan that went along with that rezoning that shows one, one primary building at the center of the site, which is the multifamily portion of it. And then, just north of that is a garage building. So, it lacks a lot of detail, but this is what we were expecting the development to look like when that rezoning went through. So, this is the site plan before you today that, that commission is considering. As I mentioned, La Arbolita is on the east side of the property and Rivillon Boulevard is to the south. Both of those roads have been constructed and recently are open and accessible to the site. When the rezoning went through, they were doing the final touches on construction, but those are now open. You can see that the, this largely matches the development plan with the multifamily being located at the center, the garage building to the north. What's important to note is there are four points of access to the site, as you can see, one on La Arbolita, one on Rivillon Boulevard, and then two that connect to the Rivillon Commons Office Complex just to the west. There's also pretty significant pedestrian connectivity in order to have this site integrate with the larger Rivillon master planned development. As I mentioned already, there's a single residential building with the garage building as well. So, the garage building highlighted there. In terms of the development itself, there are 353 units proposed. It is a five-story building. They are meeting their parking requirement with 535 spaces provided, a number of those being enclosed, and then 267 of those are covered spaces as required by the code. The development conforms with the PAD standards that were approved as part of the project. It meets all setback requirements, open space, common open space, and then it does fall within the maximum height. You may recall that when this came through for zoning, one of the requests of the applicant was to increase the maximum height up to 65 feet, and they are just under that with this proposal today. The landscape plan, as I mentioned, is consistent with what's approved or, or it's consistent with what is permitted or required per the code and is also consistent with what is developed with the larger Rivillon development. La Arbolita and Rivillon Boulevard do already have their street frontage landscaping installed. So, the landscaping plan for this development is, is really just this multifamily property. Looking at the elevations, we saw this in study session. I believe I put in your staff report that the study session was in August, but that was the rezoning study session. The study session for the design review was in October. And so, these, these are very consistent with what was viewed at that time, which the commission was very supportive of. As I mentioned, this falls just under the maximum height. The tallest point of the building is 58 feet, six inches of, of the larger building. And then, there are some elevator shafts that, that add a little, four feet to, to the top of that. With the garage building, those are 11 feet, nine inches. So, fairly, fairly short buildings. They've tried to articulate, articulate that where they can with some movement in the roof line. And then, I also want to point out, there is a pedestrian connection through that building since it is very long. since it is very long and linear. They've got that, as highlighted by that orange square on that bottom image, that's a pass-through passeau so that somebody wouldn't have to walk from the primary entrance of the multifamily building around that. They could walk through it. East-west elevations, we see a lot of those same materials and movement. The applicants also provided some renderings to help better understand what that building could look like. In terms of colors and materials, it's largely stucco brick, that fiber cement wood paneling as well. I wanted to include this, since we talked about it as part of the study session, just to see, this is the development immediately next door, some of those same rich materials, a lot of similar building forms, so it is consistent with what we see in the area. I also wanted to touch on public input because there was no public comment provided in your staff report. Staff started to get some emails late yesterday, and so, we did put those into your Dropbox for review. So, hopefully, you had a chance to review those 17 letters. But to summarize, there was a lot of concerns related to traffic congestion, the scale of the building being a five-story building, how that fits with the rest of the development, both offices and single family. I did receive another email about 30 minutes ago that was not in your Dropbox link, so there is one additional gentleman that wanted to express his opposition to it, Brent Packer, for the record. And since traffic was one of those comments that were brought up in many of those letters, I did want to briefly touch on that. The Rivulon conducted in 2020 a master traffic impact analysis that went through review. I think that was part of the Rivulon, the Lakes Office Buildings, which is just kind of southeast of the traffic circle, where you can see the number 12 on the map. I should have highlighted it. So, when that development came in for design review, they went through the exercise of doing this master traffic impact analysis to show us what is the circulation plan? How is all of this going to work over the buildout of the site? And so, I wanted to just touch on the fact that staff has been kind of using this as we review our projects, understanding how everything kind of functions together and how it will flow at full buildout. And I will also point out that this study anticipated multifamily, not just on this property, but potentially in some other locations as well. So, this master TIA does account for this in planning of the circulation network. With that, staff's recommendation is for approval of this project with the three conditions in your staff report and up on the screen. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I know the applicant is here as well.
All right. Thank you, Ashley. Are there any questions or comments for Ashley? Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
Ashley, thank you for the presentation. What's the height of the office buildings there?
The office buildings range in height. The Rivulon Commons Office Buildings, I'll have to look that up for you, but there are some buildings that are, you know, 50, 60 feet tall within the rest of the building. The applicant may have that specific information, as well as the height. If not, I'll look it up while he's giving his presentation.
Okay, so, just your best judgment, do you feel that the proposed residential building is in line with the height of the, that it's not taller than them?
Chairman and Commissioner Anderson, I do think this is in line with what's expected within the Rivulon development. One thing that I didn't note in my presentation is that Rivulon is within a vertical development overlay district, and so, we do expect and anticipate higher heights within this area. The office buildings are permitted to go, I believe, up to 90 feet by right, whereas multifamily part of their deviation request was to go to 65 because that is exempt from the, what's allowed just a bonus height under the vertical development overlay. So, we, this is very much in line with what we expect in this area. And since you asked the question, I will also just add that really, that's more of a zoning issue since the height is permitted by right under that zoning case.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Fay.
Ashley, one of the other common themes I saw, and we've seen it in other matters, was a lack of public notification. And I know sometimes people misjudge what the notification requirements are, or sometimes it didn't happen. Could you address that, or could the applicant?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman and Commissioner Fay. So, in this development, they are required to notify property owners within 300 feet of the site and HOAs within 1,000 feet. The hope is that the HOAs will kind of spread the word amongst their community as well since they have the ability to do that. And so, the applicant did meet the notice requirements. They submitted an affidavit and posted the signs as required per our land development code.
All right, thank you. That was my question as well, so thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Ashley. We'll go ahead and ask the applicant if he'd like to come up and give a presentation, or... Go ahead and hit, yeah. Actually, yeah, there you go.
Adam Baugh, 25, 25 East Arizona, Biltmore Circle. I'll be brief, a couple of things that come to mind. Unlike the zoning case where we had two public hearings and a study session, in the DR case, a study session in this one, I think there's been a lot of public hearings to participate in this process. As we have gone forward the case, what we've looked at, and I think what's within your scope review, is to make sure that this development as designed conforms with the PAD that was approved last fall. The key second consideration is that this development as designed is consistent with the quality of character that's represented in the Rivulon area. So, as we've considered how we do the perimeter treatments, the landscaping, there's harmony between this and the balance of Rivulon. There's consistency in character. You'll notice that we don't have perimeter walls around this, unlike you typically see in other multifamily developments, because we're trying to blend in with the theming design that's represented in this area. The materials, the articulation, the massing, the percentage of the materials, all of those are in harmony with the balance of the overall park, more specifically with the projects that are also panning right behind us with the new office building that's being proposed and going forward through the process. At the end of the day, I think the heights are what are permitted within this ordinance. They're matching what is otherwise allowed in this area, and overall in harmony and consistent with the character of what you'd expect to see in this intensive corridor. I think, to be clear, this is an area intended for intensity, particularly with the exhibit that Ashley showed, but more importantly, because of the type of opportunities that can create it. So, if there are questions regarding design, architecture, landscaping, grading drainage, those kind of things, and with me is the complement of the whole consultant team that can address that. If there's questions regarding land use and zoning, I could, I'm happy to address it, although I think that might have, that opportunium forum might have passed last fall. So, with that, I'm happy to end, so you can have an early night, but take any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baugh. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Baugh at this time, or the applicant? All right, not hearing any. We'll go ahead and open up to public comment. I do have two public comment cards. I'm going to go ahead and just call these down. So, I've got Richard Hall. If you'd like to come up to the mic, I'll give you three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name is Richard Hall, and I am a resident of Vintage Ranch directly across Pecos from the proposed project. I learned about this project yesterday, so I did not, I was not reached with the notices that were previously given about it. And I must, I'll start by agreeing with Chairman Simon, I don't believe any additional apartments are needed in Gilbert either. The way I see it, 353 apartments should house probably around 1,000 people. Now, 30% of that site is going to be dedicated to outdoor, but that outdoor or that common space, but that's also going to include an inside building and a pool. If any of these 1,000 people want to get outside on a nice day and go to a park, where do you suppose they're going to go? Probably the closest park, which is right across Pecos, right into Vintage Ranch. There is a park right there, and my house looks directly at it. So, one of my concerns is that that park and all the parks within Vintage Ranch are funded and paid for by our homeowners association fees. So, to have other people coming into our park using our facilities, because they don't have facilities of their own, concerns me because we don't need a big influx of people coming in, using our playgrounds, using all of our, everything that we pay for, and any damages to any of that property, we will also have to pay for. And so, we don't need that additional traffic coming in, and I honestly, in this plan, I don't see a solution for providing adequate outdoor space for people that want to get outside and spend time outside on a nice day. So, I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the impact on traffic, and I'm also concerned about the impact to home values. So, that's my feedback. I am not in favor of this project, and I thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, is it Delay, Mary Delay? I'll give you three minutes. Go ahead and state your name for us and your residence.
Hit the gray.
Yeah, hit the gray button. There you go.
Hi, my name is Mary Delay. I'm also a resident of Vintage Ranch, and I echo all the things that Mr. Hall just stated. And again, we just learned of this this week, that this development was even planned. And I am very active getting out of the community on Pecos Road, which is two lanes on each side, and the density that these five-story apartments are going to add to our neighborhood traffic, which is already difficult to get in and out of our community, is something that the commissioners need to look at more closely. And I know she already said that there was a traffic study, but nobody asked the neighbors how this was going to impact us. And I think the council needs to be sensitive, and the commission needs to be sensitive of how this impacts the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, got one more. You're hoarding them over there. All right, so I've got a few more here. Are there any more before we keep going? Can you bring those up? Ashley, somebody wants to collect those. You can bring them up, that's fine. All right, I will shuffle these like a deck of cards, so nobody knows what order they're in. No, just kidding. All right, I've got Tony DeSantis. Tony, if you'd like to come up, I'll give you three minutes.
My name's Tony DeSantis. Good evening. I live in the area, lived there for 20 years. I don't know if any of you gentlemen and ladies have been up and down Lindsay Road to see the impact it has caused. There's 45,000 cars a day go down Lindsay. You're going to add another 1,000. Guys, I mean, you know, I live less than a quarter mile from this project, and it's a travesty that everything that's going on around there. I wish you people would recommend, or even try to consider, the people that have lived there and enjoy where they're living, but now we're being ousted out. The traffic, it's a race course up and down Lindsay Road since you guys widened it, or since the city widened it. It's a race course. No police whatsoever. You can call them all day long. Doesn't have any effect on anything. It's a tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I've got Elizabeth Ganderah. Did you wish to speak? It's not marked. You have three minutes. Go ahead and hit the mic button there. It's going to be the gray button on the left.
Okay. Okay, so, we live right, it's going to be right in front of the apartment complex. We have people out there every night that park in the dark ends. We've had people jump our fence into our yard, and I'm having to come out at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning because the dogs bark, so we don't know if we get the two guys coming in again. I've had to call the police various times, and we have people racing up and down. We have the street cleaner, too. I called about that, and I guess Deloitte offices have permission for the sweepers and the blowers to be going on at 1:00 in the morning. I just, I don't know, and I wrote there, so the buildings are two-story buildings. The apartment complex is five. I don't know what more crap is going to come with those apartments. Before the road was even open, I have videos at home that I can email you guys, cars running over signs without the road being open, still now speeding up and down, people doing drugs on the corner. And I have it, you know, if you guys want the videos, I can send them to you. And I've called in, you can ask the police station, I've called in a couple of times. So, I don't know what all this is going to bring. I have three kids right in front of this apartment complex. You know, the people don't respect. There is no respect whatsoever. All the trash that people throw in the street come into the yard, to our animals. I've had two sick sheep that I've had to take care of, and one of them was on the verge of dying from the trash that people throw. So, I don't know, I don't know what else to tell you guys. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thomas Ganderah, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it looked like the same as the other name. Go ahead and state your name.
Yeah, my name is Thomas Haskell Kinard, and I live in Vintage Ranch.
Wait, wait, hang on a second. I got to find...
That's it. I live in Vintage Ranch.
Can you state your name again for me?
Yes, it's Thomas Haskell Kinard, K-I-N-A-R-D.
Okay. Did you turn in a form? I didn't see one from you.
I just brought it up there to you.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, I live in Vintage Ranch, and Mr. Hall said pretty much everything that I'd like to say, and that is that we have a lot of traffic in our, in our natural areas, in our green areas, that have got the parks in them, and we already have that without having the additional apartments down below. I firmly believe we have enough apartments in our area. I think that that five-story building, and I heard it mentioned here, that this building is not any higher than the two-story buildings that are already in there, the office buildings, but it sure feels like they're going to be a lot bigger and a lot taller than those other buildings. I'm really concerned about the traffic. I'm retired for some years, and I don't have to get out in the traffic early in the morning except to go to the gym. By the time I get out there, though, there's traffic all over the place. It's just busy. The light to get onto Pecos from our development, you end up with 30 cars backed up at that light. It's, we're rural. I think of us as rural, and maybe I'm naive about that part, but our rural piece has gone away from our neighborhood completely. So, I'd like to see there be no more multifamily put in that area. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now, I do have a Thomas Ganderah. I'm not sure if that's the same. I don't know if you'd like to speak. You don't have to. It's not marked that you wish to speak, so.
Guessing it's on? Okay. So, the thing is that I've lived there my whole life, but the problem is, is that, like everyone else says, there's a lot of speeding, a lot of traffic. We even have an open water well. Previously, in the meetings before, they said they couldn't do anything about it, build a wall or anything, not even a fence. I've seen people go like probably 50 miles an hour on that 30 mile an hour zone. What did me and my dad have to do? We had to put up our own fence. Every day, we just see people go back and forth, 50, almost 60 miles an hour. And the other thing, it's like, I have my niece and nephew, both of them, like, they're young kids. I don't want anything to happen to them, so we have to put up the wall, and then even just how people are treating like my family and everything. It's not right. Like, they have like, they just keep going and going, and like, just thinking about like how we're going to have apartment buildings added, and even we were heard that there was going to be like a hotel even built down the street, too. We talked to police, and they even said that the crime rates were going to skyrocket because of this, so. But just wanted to let you guys know what's going on, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. I've got a Haskell Kinard, is that correct? I'm not sure. Oh, that was you that just, okay, I apologize. I didn't catch that correctly. Trent Goodard? I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, so apologize for butchering. Go ahead and state your name, and you got three minutes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for the sloppy handwriting.
No, mine's the same, so no need to apologize.
My name is Trent Grossarth. I live in the Vintage Ranch community right across from Pecos Road there, as we've had a... My name is Trent Grossarth. I live in the Vintage Ranch community right across from Pecos Road there, as we've had a couple of the people from the community talk about. I realize that the rezoning has already been approved, so I want to talk about the design elements. That is what under consideration here. I think the number one issue really is, is when you look at the Vintage Ranch community and the Allen Ranch community, which are directly across the street. They're small communities. In the Vintage Ranch community, there's 300 homes, 307 units to be exact. We have over a thousand acre park, something that is a real anchor to that community. I think if you talk to all the residents, that really is what draws them to the community. And I think it's very evident when you look at the planning for this new design and development, there's no park, right? There's nothing for their residents. There's 300-some-odd units there. They're going to be drawn to the Vintage Ranch neighborhood. We love people, we love our neighbors, but those are amenities that we pay for. And we love to share it, but we don't want to pick up other people's dog feces. You know, we don't want, we have basketball courts. So our residents will have to contend for basketball courts. We don't see basketball courts in their, in their design. We have pickleball court that will be coming, that our HOA is adding. Again, we don't see that in their design. And I don't believe that they're going to want to open up their amenities to our community. If they have a pool, I don't think they're going to want it to be a common public pool. I don't think they'll want that. If they have a gym, they probably don't want us in their gym. So I don't, I don't think I see the appropriate amenities for their community, for them to stay in their community. Like I said, we love to have people in our area, but also those are things that we pay for and we believe should be cared for by our, our residents in our area. So I would petition the board and the commission here to reject this design. Go back, tell them they need to provide amenities for their people that they can use within their area. And you can talk about how big Rivellon is, but I don't see a park in Rivellon for any housing whatsoever. I don't see a grass area. I don't see a basketball court. I don't see pickleball courts. I don't see things that will attract them to come into the Vintage Ranch area. And I think for this reason, this is why this should be rejected. Send it back to the developer to rethink this. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. I believe the next one is Robert Mitchell. I'm not sure if you wish to speak. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Name's Robert Mitchell. I'm a resident of Vintage Ranch as well for several years, about 12 years now. And we do have the large park. We don't see any work for entertainment, again, like what they're talking about. One of the things that Gilbert benefits is from the real estate taxes from the property values. And something that this density, this high density here, that's encroaching into the view of the backyards and the streets because it's so high, the question was asked of her about the design of the unit. Well, the windows aren't all the way to the top on those office buildings. And even as tall as they are, they're not going to be as high as these buildings here. There's not enough entertainment. There's not, to keep these people where they're at. And yes, they're going to be going in our area as well. And because of the real estate taxes going down, because the value's going down as well, we're going to be negatively impacted as well as Gilbert is at the same time. Lindsay got that ramp on, on the freeway. It's the only ramp on Lindsay on any freeway we have. We didn't get any sound barriers. We're going to have more noise from the roaring of the cars from here. We have motorcycles, just figure, just a sheer percentage of people that are in there, you know, a certain percentage of the people are not mentally stable. So the higher density of people, the more numbers you're going to get. I mean, all the things just factor in. The trash that comes with it, we just don't see the benefit of having that in our neighborhood. It's going to be, like I said, these five-story buildings looking over, the first two streets in Vintage Ranch are going to be super negatively affected by this. And they're going to gather more money just because of the sheer numbers there. But as far as the taxes, it's not going to impact positively for Gilbert like we'd want it for. Yeah, I really don't think this is something that's good for us. The design is not acceptable by us in Vintage Ranch. We're going to be the ones impacted the most.
Alright, thank you. And last but not least, I've got Thomas Soluzano. I'm not sure if you're still here and wish to speak. Alright, I've got, Thomas is opposed, crime rate skyrocket, water restrictions will escalate as well. Alright, I'll go ahead and, Mr. Ball, would you like to respond to any of those comments? Nope, alright. Are there any other questions for the applicant or staff on this before I close the public hearing? Yeah, Commissioner Gage.
I didn't see a dog park in this plan. Am I just missing it? It seems like that's a really popular amenity and if the neighbors are concerned about residents here spilling over into their neighborhoods, that might contain some of what they're concerned about.
Excellent question. No, we do not have a dog park. A couple of things. There is an actual linear park that is directly on the north side of us that spans through the entirety of Rivellon. So that was intentional to be sort of a walking trail park space, so if someone wanted to walk a pet, that would be a spot for them. And our intention is to have some of those canister, doggy, you know, I'm lacking the words, but the amenity that facilitates that for pet owners in that area. And also, I guess to address the biggest question about park, I certainly can appreciate the concern about maybe overloading a park in an HOA in the area. But truthfully, I think if somebody wanted to use a park, they would just drive the two miles up the street to Free Stone Park, or what is it, three miles maybe? Where there's a greater variety of park amenities that could be available to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, is that it? Alright, any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back up to the dice for discussion. Anybody have any comments they'd like to start off with? No? Nobody? Commissioner Bianchi?
Somebody's got to start, so. Thank you, Chair. I understand when, when folks come out, especially when we get to the design review cases, where we've already seen the general plan, we've already seen the zoning, we've already seen the stipulations and things like that. It can be a little frustrating, especially if this is your introduction to that process. Whereas we're just kind of looking more along the designs, the facade, that sort of thing with the circulation. So I understand a lot of the frustration that really isn't before us tonight, but things we can consider. I know one gentleman did speak about the design. And again, it is your right, especially in Vintage Ranch, to be able to limit your amenities to folks just in your area. I know that requires some level of enforcement as well, but I think is overall, you know, the design is acceptable. I think I would look at this and kind of say, I'd still maintain my preference to see some roofline articulation. I think the staff did state that some had been provided. But I think even in doing so, we would probably, that would just involve adding more height above what's already accepted, so that may not be a way to go. But above the current allowance. So as far as the town, you know, the noise and everything that folks were saying, I mean, that really comes down to being the town's noise ordinance and making sure that's followed. But based on the design that's presented to us and the previous times that we've seen this proposal, I don't have any problems or serious issues with the design itself to vote against it.
Alright, thank you. Any other comments? No? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Chair. I just, I echo a lot of what Commissioner Bianchi said. I do like the roofline as is though. I think it's a nice design. I like the texture under the eaves and under the patios. I think that adds an element of quality that's really going to read well. Overall, I like the design. I remembered from the last hearings that we had that there was that linear path on the north side. There will be some amenities, I'm sure, inside the building with the gym. But generally, I was okay with that. As far as the height clarification, what I heard was that, that development is approved for higher heights, but those buildings right next door to it aren't necessarily as tall as this is going to be. But the overall area, so staff can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But I believe that to be the case, that it's just, this will be taller than those buildings next door.
Yeah, that's my correct, yeah, correct.
I just wanted to clarify that. But again, I think it's a nice project. The zoning's been established. I was supportive of that and I am very supportive of the design that's proposed.
Alright, thank you. Any other comments? No? I'll just throw out there for myself. Commissioner Fay? I was just going to say, I'll echo the same sentiments. I think in this situation, because of where the property sits, that 300 feet is actually within a fairly close density of that site. And I think the edge of it was over 500 feet. So that initial 300 feet wouldn't apply other than some of those neighbors, I think, to the south of it. With regards to the HOA, the applicant, I would assume on this, would probably echo that there is no control. Once the notice is sent to the HOA, it's the HOA's responsibility to make sure that it gets out to the neighbor. So as much as I empathize with the situation and not hearing about it until possibly today, that the applicant doesn't have control over that. And we've been through a very lengthy process to get to this point. A number of hearings with regards to the zoning and the general plan and actually approving this into there. Today, we're looking at the design review. And, and, you know, I mean, just a quick note on the traffic. I would think that the traffic would probably filter more to the south along the Rivellon Boulevard and then hitting Lindsay the 202 or Gilbert the 202 or pushing over to one of those streets. And I understand one of the comments was Lindsay Road. You know, again, unfortunately, we are at a state in our town where we are close to build out, so we're going to start seeing vertical. And we're going to see more and more vertical. And, you know, my comment earlier that I made with regards to apartments, it's not necessarily that I am opposed or for apartments. It's that I think that they make sense in certain areas in the town and I think this is one of those that, that this definitely makes sense. Especially from an employment corridor with, with density that is needed to support those businesses in that area. From a design perspective, I think that, I have no problem with this design whatsoever. I think that it, it fits the executive level of what is probably going to be in that area with some of the other industries that are pulling, with the Deloitte, with the Isogenics and some of the other businesses that are actually in there, which I would argue are not necessarily low-paying jobs. But then that's, that's hyperbole and, you know, for speculation. So my vote on this would, would be to approve or recommend approval to council. But Commissioner Fay, I'll throw it over to you. You had a comment.
I think the height comment, if I heard it, was not that the buildings adjacent are taller, but that the, there's an overlay that allows commercial buildings that will presumably, sorry if I'm ruining anyone's, making things worse here, that commercial buildings could be coming in that are, that they, by right, can go taller than this. And I think some of the ones down, I think you mentioned Isogenics, I forgot the names. But some of those ones down around the freeway already might be in that ballpark, but I think that's kind of the tenor of the area. I had two, well, a couple, so that's, that's a, I don't know, that's kind of in the, in the expectation realm. My instinct tells me that 30% open space, this does not look like 30% open space. But maybe I'm, I mean, I'm kind of eyeballing it, so. But, you know, Tom, if you'd take a, Tom, if you're anywhere out there, if you're listening, or if anyone else would just pass it to Tom, if you'd take a, take a look at that and, because this one, one of the heartaches I've got is when you design to the absolute minimum standard. And this one, everything is as tall, every setback is as minimal as they possibly can squeeze onto. I usually, there's one particular developer I poke at usually for packing the maximum onto a site they can. And they did it, and they're within standards here. It's just they maximized everything they possibly could. That said, it meets the standards and it's already, the zoning and PAD are already there. So this is, they're already, that stuff's already approved. So I don't, I don't really see, other than for the neighbors to the south, I don't really see the traffic argument. And frankly, yeah, it is a very rural nature right in there, but it's, sorry, it's not going to stay that way. It's, the landowners and even, even the rural landowners are going to start selling and making pretty fair money at it and people will have a right to develop their property. So, Adam, there's a little element of begrudging because of how much it's, it's kind of maximized, but I'm supportive of where it is. Assuming that the open space pencils out. That's my comment.
Alright, thank you. Any other comments?
Chair, just want to make a
Commissioner Anderson.
Quick correction. You stated earlier that this would go to council. This does not go to council after this, for a DR case. So once we
Approve.
Yeah, once we approve it, it stops here.
Thank you for that correction.
To clarify that, so there's no misunderstanding on the audience.
Alright, thank you.
The last item that we, the last time this came before us, it did go to council, right?
For zone.
For zoning, right. So DR does not go to council?
Right.
But the last, so the last time was the last time council saw it?
Yes.
But there could be an appeal process if it ever got to that point, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comment? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make it. Motion to approve DR 22-143 Stillwater Rivellon.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a, second by Commissioner Gage. Go ahead and cast your vote. Alright, vote carries 7-0. Alright, thank you all for coming out. We'll go ahead and Samantha, you are up. Item number nine, DR 2294 Cobblestone number 48.
Okay, yes, the Samantha show. Okay, this is DR 2294 Cobblestone number 48. I'm Samantha Novotny, Planner One, Case Planner for this project. The project is located at the northwest corner of Higley and Williamsfield. The site is in the blue outline and black. Hang on, clicker problems. Okay, there we go. And the black outlines the master site plan that was approved last year of July 2022. This may look familiar. I've brought a different case to study session last December. And then there is another case on this agenda that has to do with this site, so it'll look familiar. The site is 1.45 acres in the shopping center zoning district. It's the next DR in a multi-phase master plan for this entire corner. It's part of the gateway character area. The site's building coverage is about 9% on, on the 1.45 acre site. It's a car wash building, just shy of 6,000 square feet with covered parking canopies for vacuum users at about 6,500 square feet. On-site improvements include drive aisles, payment queuing, three shaded point-of-sale stalls, internal drainage improvements, perimeter landscaping and internal landscaping. And you can see from the site plan on the north, the building is faced, oriented in the east-west direction with the tunnel entrance on the west and the exit on the east. And then south of the building are three rows of shaded canopies for those vacuum users. There's about 40 spaces with two special ADA designated spaces. And then in the upper left of that image, you can see the trash enclosure on the northwest area that's accessible through the circulation drive that, along the western boundary, that's proposed to connect with the other commercial users, the user to the south and the remainder of the commercial site. As the site is in the gateway character area, it is subject to special right-of-way streetscape guidelines, which they do meet. Evergreen species to the west was a piece of feedback from the neighbors. They, they wanted more visual screening from the commercial uses and from lighting. So the applicant proposes a denser planting of those evergreen trees being, I believe it's mulga on the west side, and then meeting the streetscape guidelines, Chinese elm and pistash are both required from that list of trees in the special guidelines, and that's what they have proposed there. Here is a look at the elevations. Here is a look at the elevations. They show 360 architecture and vibrant corporate colors. Staff likes the design. There is one component staff feels that can be improved upon, and that would be the blade wing wall that you see on the left side of the north elevation, the right side on the south elevation. Right now, in this image, it shows the tippy-top height at 25 feet, and staff feels that a reduction in that architectural blade, just by a little bit, down to 23 feet, would improve the proportion of the wall to the building size, the building scale. So the north elevation is proposed, as is in the staff report, the top elevation, and then the bottom shows a two-by-one reduction. So I have a little, if you can see that on your screen, in the north elevation, I reduce it by that two-by-one. And I can flash that again when we discuss later. You can always go back to this slide. The entrance tunnel is about 200 feet away from the property line to the west. You can see the west elevation here, that's the entrance, and then the east elevation, that's the exit. And just a glimpse of the shade canopies, pretty standard for what you've seen around A look at the colors and materials. We have C M U block primarily for the building and the corporate cobblestone blue, a flash of the red barn that's on that accent wing wall, and the fabric awning is sort of a play on the cobblestone blue. The applicant held a supplemental virtual neighborhood meeting on November 30th, 2022. Staff wants to note that this meeting was not a code requirement, and they did that voluntarily. Some of the feedback included impacts for loud noises from the vacuums and the car wash tunnel. They wish to see more screening from the commercial uses with evergreen landscaping, and they did have a general positive reception towards commercial uses at this intersection. At this time, however, no other public comments have been received. The applicant did meet the notification requirements, and no public comments have been received. With that, staff has a recommendation to approve the findings of fact and approve D R 2294, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and if staff agrees to add a condition related to the elevations that I talked about earlier, D, because there are three conditions already, so D would be the fourth, the red accent blade wall, as shown on the elevations exhibit, shall be further reduced by two feet in height and one foot in width. A revised elevation exhibit shall be reviewed and approved by planning staff before building permit issuance. And that's my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Samantha? Yeah, Commissioner Bianchi.
Thank you, Chair. All right. So we kept it on non-consent, so Samantha, you get some questions here. Just looking at the site plan, I think, I just need you to confirm, so the vacuums that are in there, are they silenced due to the interior housing, and they're not at the individual spaces? Did I read that in the staff report? Because I tend to worry about noise when it's close by to residential with these types of uses.
Chair Simon and Commissioner Bianchi, the vacuums are at each individual stall.
Okay, but I thought I had read that there's an interior housing where the motor is for that, so it's, that's, the noise, I think, is reduced at those bays or those stalls.
Yes, I believe so. That the, the bigger housing is in the building, but if you've ever been to one of these car washes-
Yes.
The individual hoses are at that particular station, so there's no silencing-
Okay.
-that sound.
And I imagine they'll have the air guns too, to blow the air off the water at the stalls too?
They haven't confirmed that throughout this review, but I imagine that is their business model-
Okay.
Typical of their business model.
And then it looks like the air dryers or the exit is on the east side, so that's further away from the residential.
Correct. That would be facing Higley Road.
Okay. And then with your proposed added condition, did you get any feedback from the applicant on that? I mean, I imagine it still retains the look and feel of the design, and they probably save a little on materials, but did they provide you any feedback or give you, have any heartburn with that?
Commissioner Bianchi, staff worked with the applicant in earlier iterations. It was actually taller at 28 feet, and we made that suggestion to lower it, so they did lower it to 25 feet, and that was a little bit of a late review, so this request was not last minute enough, or to not be included in this discussion, but staff does feel that 28 to 25 is appreciated, but just a little bit more would help.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Ashley? Comments? Yeah.
Just really quick, back on that same issue. Thank you, Chair. What is that little bit more? Can you go back to that change, the elevation that showed the, was it two feet?
Yes, I'm proposing two by one, so from the top, which would be the height, is the two feet, and the one is the width. So let me see if my animation will flash. Does that show? Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Sorry, I, yeah. Commissioner Anderson.
So what's the reasoning for lowering it? I mean, if they meet the height requirements now, what's the reason for the suggested lowering of that wing wall?
Yep. Commissioner Anderson, it's purely staff opinion. There's, they do meet the height requirement, so they could leave it as is, but staff just felt that a further reduction would benefit the aesthetics and the proportion to the building, the scale.
Okay. Is the applicant okay with that modification?
Um-
Have you, have you brought it up to them yet?
Commissioner Anderson, I did communicate with the applicant. I hadn't heard a response-
Okay.
-from them since.
All right. I'm indifferent. I mean, I don't know if lowering it makes it better, leaving it same, so it's up to staff and the applicant if that's something that they want to agree to. I'm indifferent. I don't know if it does anything.
Samantha, is the applicant here? Maybe I'd like to address that now.
Justin from C S M Three Design, 2645 North Seventh Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona. Thank you again for the opportunity to be in front of you. Very quickly, I just want to reiterate, been working diligently with staff on the site plan, and the elevations, as Samantha mentioned, we actually did coordinate with Samantha going from 28 to 25, which we went back to corporate, or to cobblestone team, and they definitely agreed to that. The additional height reduction, I actually, I apologize if I hadn't seen that, that is actually news to me now, to actually further reduce that, and definitely we're not in agreement with that. I think reducing from 28 to 25 still keeps the massing. We actually reduced the width of the blade as well, so you don't get this squatty thing. Further reducing that now, I think it's really going to impact the design. So again, we met the height requirements with the 28 feet, but we understood that their staff had concerns with it, so we went ahead and agreed to go ahead and reduce it by three feet. So to answer your question, we're not in agreement to further decrease that.
And again, with, I can answer any other questions you all may have. Yeah. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. You've got a location out at Ellsworth and Pecos. Is that one, I've seen that one, and I pulled up an elevation of it here, and it looks like that one might be the 28 feet. Is that correct?
Through the chairman, Commissioner Leslie. Good to see you. Actually, Ellsworth and Pecos is, has a seastore component to it. Actually, that one is 40 feet.
Oh, okay.
So, and the massing, it still works, it's a great-looking building. So this one at 25, we had a little bit of concerns, but it still worked. I think further reducing that would not work. And then very quickly, if I may, just to answer the question, I apologize, I think it was through the chair, Commissioner Bianchi had regarding the vacuums. So our central vac system is inside the building. It's a masonry with a roof on it. That's where the noise, if you will, generated from it. At the different components of the, where the people are vacuuming, literally, there's almost zero decibels unless you're picking up a penny or something. So you don't actually have individual motors out at the vacuums. It's all central vac system.
Commissioner Fay.
Sir, I'm sorry, I was trying to be polite and not speak, but I may have messed up things. I usually don't weigh in on aesthetics, but I actually kind of like that, that wing wall. I mean, it's a little bit of a wacky eccentric feature. It's not the one you want your neighbor to have, but for a car wash, it's kind of got a 60s Tomorrowland at Disney vibe to it. I kind of like it. I think it's a, it's a positive feature. So sorry if I waited too long to throw that in there, and now I sound like an antagonist, but-
No.
No, go figure. I do have one other question, though, related to parking. As I see it, because those, those vacuum stalls, those are not parking space, I mean, you pull a car into them and you vacuum, but that's not parking, and I see there are, I thought it was one parking space and one ADA, but now I see it's two ADA spots, right?
Commissioner Fay, through Chair Simon, the vacuum bays are not considered parking in the conventional sense. Think of the vacuum bays as an extension of the building footprint.
Right, right. But for land development code purposes, we don't count them as parking spaces, right?
That's correct. Yes. I do want to point out, there are three open parking spaces to the top left. That is for employees and visitors to use, anyone not using a vacuum bay. And to the left of that, I believe those are the ADA vacuum spaces.
If, if I may, actually, the site plan that's on here, I apologize, but I know that Samantha has the more up-to-date site plan. This is not the latest and greatest, because what we actually did in those three spots that you see, the first three vacuum spots after the ADA, we actually made those the ADA, where the two ADA spaces that are shown right now, we actually made three standard parking spaces with no vacuums, and those account for the parking minimum requirements. So I'm not really sure why the latest and greatest is not on the presentation.
So if I hear you correctly, there's three non-ADA spots and either one or two ADA spots?
Commissioner Fay, based on the site plan that I have, that is correct. I will say that the L D C requires only two spaces, so they do whatever iteration they have that Mr. Missy has just described, or the version that I have, they do meet their parking requirements.
Okay. I was checking that this afternoon, but I didn't get far enough, because I thought this was otherwise a very easy one to approve. And when I saw two ADAs, I thought, whoa, this is, but if there's three spots and two ADAs, okay, no problem. That addresses my concern.
Can I jump in on that? I just want to make, so the site plan that's in our packet is what he's describing. So there's three standard stalls on the left, and then to the right of those, there's two handicap stalls. Are those handicap stalls for vacuums? It looks like there's vacuums there.
Commissioner Anderson, that is correct.
All right. So those ADA stalls, according to you, are not real stalls. They're part of the footprint. So you're missing an ADA stall on site somewhere. So if you have three parking spaces, those are the parking spaces to meet code, right? To the right of that, you have two ADA vacuum stalls, which do not count towards L D C parking counts, so we need to get an ADA stall on here somewhere, correct?
Commissioner Anderson, that is correct.
Okay. So that's something that he'll have to get addressed when he goes into CDs. He's aware of it?
Correct. Through the, through the Chair, Commissioner Anderson, if, in fact, again, we look at it from a standpoint of the overall parking, one per 25, and I understand the town doesn't consider those as parking spaces, plus we always want to provide, make sure that the, some of the vacuums are accessible, so that's why we have two, but if you want a condition to have actually one of the three standard spaces to be ADA-
It's not a condition, it's ADA requirements. It's code required. Yeah. I mean, take L D C out of it altogether, once you start dealing with ADA, that's what's requiring that stall to be in there. So you're aware of it?
Correct.
So if you can maybe get that on there when you submit for CDs?
Correct.
Okay. They'll pick it up during plan review at that point. I don't think we need to condition it or stipulate it.
That much more eloquently nails kind of my confused dance around the issues. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for staff or the applicant? No? All right. Thank you. We'll go ahead and, I don't have any community comment cards for this, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point, unless there's somebody in the community. Bring up the dice for conversation and/or emotion. Anybody like to start?
Yeah, Chairman, I'll just say that, you know, in regards to the comment on the height of the wall, I actually have no problem the way it is, and I'd be in favor of a motion. The design as is, of course, meeting the ADA standards, and I know some other people said that.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Bianchi.
Yeah, I would say similar to Vice Chairman Munt. I understand staff's request on the reduction, but I look at it, and they've already reduced it once, the height requirements are already met, so as Commissioner Anderson said, you know, you can kind of take it either way, but I don't think we need to condition that if that's the commission's purview. In regards to the noise, I mean, we've got, what, a 35-foot landscape setback, plus the addition of a smaller C M U on that west side near that drive aisle, so that kind of addresses a lot of my concerns, especially when we talk about noise with residential areas behind that. But other than that, I'd be, I'd be in favor of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, Chairman, then, seeing no other comment, I'd like to make a motion to approve D R 22-94 Cobblestone number 48, as designed with ADA requirements, which of course need to be met anyway.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and I'm assuming that's without reduction of the wall further.
Correct.
Okay, so I have a motion by the Vice Chair. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Fay. We'll go ahead and cast vote. And the motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Okay, Samantha. I think we do this time. I'm just kidding. Samantha, we got D R 22-160. Is that pronounced Intasis? Intesis?
I believe it is Intasis. It's an old name from a very old development from 1994.
All right. Thank you.
This is D R 22160 Intasis Shell Building. I'm Samantha Navatney, Planner One. This is our site here in red. It is just southeast and east of Arizona Ave and Baseline Road in the Fiesta Tech industrial area. This is part of our northwest growth area. It's, the majority of this place is zoned light industrial, and the blue shows that it's part of an approved master plan. That's kind of a blue-purple color, and the site is labeled there and outlined in red. I just want to show the staff recommendation for now, we'll come back to it. There are two conditions that I'm going to talk about. That came up a little last minute, so I'll be diving into those. As I said, it's part of the northwest growth area. The site is 5.6 gross acres. The building is oriented in the east-west direction, similar to the last building, with access along Fiesta Boulevard, and that access is shared with the existing buildings to the south. The general site layout includes a large parking area to the north of the building with a circulation drive that continues to the west and connects to a secured truck-loading area, and then also leads, again, to the existing buildings to the south, which makes sense, it's part of a master plan. The site plan shows 22 loading bays that's on the south side of the building with a 70-foot wide drive aisle to service the semi-trailer vehicles that are expected to enter and exit each bay. The loading area is proposed to be screened with an eight-foot screening wall on the west and south, and because the east side is adjoining the street frontage, code requires the screen wall to be a little taller at 14 feet for full screening. Okay, this is the landscape plan attached to the staff report. So this is what you saw in your packet. Um, I want to spend some time talking about the landscape plan because it has to do with the two conditions, um, that staff would like to propose related to the plan. There is a revised version, and I'm, I'm going to show you that in a second. So this is just what's in your staff report. For some background, there was a master plan for signage and landscaping that was codified in an ordinance, um, special to this area back in 1983. It doesn't specifically require turf, but the master plan shows hand-drawn, hand-colored turf, implying that this was the intended preference for the area. Um, and it makes sense. If any of you have ever driven through this area, there's a very specific turf aesthetic. So fast forward a little bit to today, and this proposal includes, um, a complete overhaul of that frontage landscape, uh, removing the turf and replacing with zero-scape drought-tolerant plants and design methods. And at this time, staff is supportive of that move, um, but we didn't want to be in violation of the 1983 ordinance. Um, so we felt some assurance was needed from the Property Owners Association in the form of an authorized authorization letter. That's, uh, pretty typical of our application requests. It was understood earlier, uh, in the review, that the Fiesta Tech POA was okay with the landscaping, um, changes. But it turns out at last minute that they did want to keep some of the turf, um, and maintain that cohesive look in the Fiesta Tech area rather than breaking it up. This is the revised landscape plan showing turf in the first 30 feet of frontage. Uh, but there's a catch, though. The state's water management plan for Phoenix prohibits, uh, plants that are not in the low-water use list in the public right-of-way. This doesn't mean that the subject site can't have turf. They certainly can have it if they want, um, but it has to be within the limits of the property lines. So their plans, uh, have a label saying that they are going to grade the entire site and propose to reinstall the grass, um, that however, is not allowed in the right-of-way. So to keep the case moving forward, staff has two conditions. Um, turf shall be separated from other landscape areas by a six-inch wide concrete header. That's pretty standard. And number eight, though, is, um, just specifically calling out that we need to see a revised landscape plan showing that there is no turf in the right-of-way. Uh, and they need to submit that to planning staff for review and approval before the building permit issuance. So they won't need to come back to Planning Commission for this review. It'll just be administrative. Here's a look at the elevations. The building is about 44 feet tall to the parapet and 36 feet to the flat roof surface. Concrete tilt-up panels are proposed, and the facade design includes color changes, variations in the roof lines, and metal canopies at the doorways and entries. And although the southern elevation where the loading bays are is internal to the master site plan, uh, they still attempted to incorporate roofline and color changes, which staff appreciates. And then you can also see entry, uh, the entry and windows on the north elevation are recessed and defined with canopies and movement, wall pop-outs. Um, I think that really helps provide a sense of arrival for those in that north parking lot and also where the, um, employee amenity area is located. Uh, the color palette is a neutral kind of gray and keeps consistent with the adjoining building to the south. The applicant, um, ensured also that the screen walls, since they are going to be taller, eight feet and 14 feet, um, utilize the two colors from the main building to match and bring, bring it all together and kind of give it a two-tone look. Here's a quick look at the floor plan. It truly is a shell building. The only internal rooms you see there are an electrical room, roof access, and fire riser room. And then a quick flash to the met, uh, phonometric plan. Um, in your, in your staff packet, the applicant is requesting additional lighting height, which the code does allow for as long as you, the Planning Commission or Design Review Board, agree that the additional findings have been met. Um, staff doesn't have any concern with this, um, and recommends that the findings have been met, but that is up to the discretion of the DRB. And those, um, reasons and explanations from the applicant are listed in the staff report. Uh, so here's my recommendation again. Uh, approve the findings of fact and approve DR 22-160 Intasis Shell Building, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, along with these two added conditions related to the landscape plan, uh, that I discussed earlier.
All right.
And questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Samantha? Commissioner Bianchi.
Sorry, thank you, Chair. So Samantha, so would you agree that the colors and the materials proposed are consistent with the other buildings within the master site plan?
Uh, Commissioner Bianchi, yes, I would agree so. Uh, there is, uh, an administrative design review that, um, they are proposing to modify, um, parts of the, the southern building. Um, that's not part of this review, but I'm also the case planner for that. So I'm making sure that all of it kind of looks cohesive and ties together.
Okay. And then the second question I had, it was in the site plan narrative. I noticed that they were saying that they're going to move and put the, the drive entry. As part of that, they're going to abandon a 48-foot PUE easement. Um, is utility access still provided? Or are they just relocating that drive access but maintaining at least PU, PUE access? I'm wondering, are they abandoning the public utility easement as part of this?
Uh, Commissioner Bianchi, that is a great question. I may defer to the applicant to answer that.
Okay.
My name's Jonathan Shuey, uh, DLR Group, 6225 North 24th Street, Phoenix, Arizona. Uh, I'm the architect on the project, but I can speak to the civil design as well. Basically, in order for the shared drive to work, we, and to be adequately separated from the vehicular parking lot, we shifted it south. So all of the PUEs that were a little bit north of here, the whole utility system is being relocated to the south drive. You can see, uh, a 12-foot water PUE, um, and there's a sewer PUE that tails off and goes to the building, too. But my understanding is that, um, they were abandoning all the PUEs surrounding the previous drive and moving the utilities they had to, to the new drive.
So there's maybe no infrastructure within that PUE, and you're just going to install it in the new one as part of that?
Yes, our civil team coordinated, uh, with the, uh, utility providers in the area to confirm that, um, there was nothing that needed to be removed or relocated.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I just saw that when you were going to abandon that race.
Yeah, they abandoned quite a few.
Okay, thank you.
But they're very old. The lot has been empty for a very long time.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Samantha? Yeah, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Samantha, it's my understanding with the ADWR, the water, low-water list, if something's existing, it can stay. And it looks like that turf is already in that location. Have they looked at, maybe this isn't something they've had time to look at, um, being able to maintain it and not grade it all out of there and maintain the turf that's there to keep that look along the street? And then the areas like where they replaced the driveway, maybe that isn't turf, but it's revegetated with other more zero-scape?
Yeah, Chair Simon, Commissioner Davis. Um, Jonathan and I had many last-minute conversations about, um, what could be done and what the options were, and you are correct. If the, uh, turf and landscaping is not touched, it's not subject to current regulations. But in, in looking through the plans and having some discussions with John, um, it does look like they will be knocking down quite a bit of what's existing due to grading purposes. And so, uh, the grass could not be reinstalled. Uh, it could within property limit, just not in the right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? John, is there anything else you'd like to share with us, or are you good on this one?
I just want to say the owner is, uh, not, he doesn't want the turf, really. We were told to put it in because of a map that they found in 1983 that looked like grass. So he has no problem removing it from the PUE, um, and installing some, uh, low-water use grass-like plants in the, in the public right-of-way.
All right, thank you. What, what is the right of the town if they've got, um, this plan from 1983 with regards to grass and whatnot? And us moving more towards zero-scape with water situations that we've had as of late? What type of power do we have, or is there?
Uh, Chair Simon, that's a great question. If the ordinance was very obvious and, and had a strict provision in there that required turf, then we would have to go with the ordinance. But in examining the documents, it's a little gray. So in talking with staff internally, um, we felt that there, there could be an argument made for moving away from the turf, um, because it wasn't laid out so obviously in, in the zoning ordinance. And, um, this is the direction that the town is headed. Um, our water conservation team, I don't want to give out any spoilers, but they are looking into a program of, um, grass removal, turf removal rebates. Uh, so they're looking to encourage, um, businesses and residents, you know, compensating them for removing, um, turf, um, and being sensitive to our water conservation issues. And, um, as planning staff currently, we do support the move. Um, but the, the, the dance was a little weird. We just needed some assurance, uh, from the Fiesta Tech POA that they would be okay with this being the first project to remove the turf completely. It's going to change the look of the area. The town doesn't mind that, but certainly maybe private parties would have minded that. So we wanted to have, um, a letter of authorization saying that they were okay with that.
Okay. One more question with regards to natural turf versus artificial turf. Does some of the regulations and whatnot pass through the state? Does that apply to commercial as well?
Chair Simon, yes, it does. Uh, the, I worked with the water conservation team in looking through the plan. Um, it's called the Phoenix Fourth Management Plan, and it, uh, calls out industrial users not being allowed to use plants in the right-of-way that are not on their preferred list. But with regards to artificial turf, that certainly is something that can be utilized. Um, with, it kind of, uh, alludes to my condition here. Um, I tried to keep it vague enough that turf shall be removed. It's up to the applicant what they want to fill in with that space in the right-of-way. It just can't be in the right-of-way. So they can put in turf if they want, uh, uh, artificial turf.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I, I, I mean, obviously, you know, stepping in with regards to, you get, you get this whole other argument with, you know, existing developments and, and, and what, what they're trying to accomplish within their existing development and then private property rights and being able to develop it to today's standards versus 40 years ago. So just thinking out loud, so. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, not hearing any. Um, I don't have any comment cards from the public on this one, so we'll go ahead and thank you very much, both. Um, we'll close the public hearing, bring it up to the dais for any, um, conversation and/or a motion. Commissioner Anderson.
If there's no conversation, I'm ready for a motion.
Go for it.
Uh, motion to approve DR 22-160 with added two conditions, seven and eight, as presented by staff.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fay. We'll go ahead and cast vote. And motion carries 7-0. Thank you. We'll move on to the last item on the regular meeting agenda. Uh, items number 11 and 12, I'm assuming we're going to do these together. Um, here, the GP General Plan 2210, Higley Industrial to Commercial, and the zoning 2209, Higley Industrial to Commercial. And Samantha?
I was starting to get comfy. I thought I was done. It's okay, third, third one's a charm. Okay. GP 2210 and Z 2209, Higley Industrial to Commercial. Uh, you saw this as a study session last December in 2022. I'll go through this really quickly, um, because, uh, this would have been on the consent agenda, but there were some minor tweaks to the conditions, and, uh, we just needed to officialize it and bring it forth on the dais to get it on record. Here we are again at Higley and Williams Field. The red outline is where this, uh, rezoning and GP amendment is taking place, and in the blue outline, again, is that master site plan. Um, the proposed general plan amendment is to go from industrial to general commercial, and the rezoning is from light industrial to shopping center. Just showing you, um, how the site has parceled out. There's the quick trip that was approved with the master site plan. A self-storage, uh, CUP, conditional use permit and design review that is, um, on hold. Uh, we're looking for a second review that should be coming up soon. Then we've got the cobblestone, which you saw two cases ago. And then this, this site in red. Here's a look at the general plan. The light industrial is where the, uh, self-storage is going to remain, and then, um, general commercial to the south. So the uses and the switch over is, is compatible. Um, again, the zoning going from light industrial to shopping center, and all of the zoning to the south is shopping center. So we feel this is a compatible fit. Public participation, uh, there was a neighborhood meeting last February 2022. Six members of the public attended, plus the development team. This was the first neighborhood meeting, so there, this was a good opportunity for a first look, and, um, they had a lot of questions and concerns. Uh, the applicant held another neighborhood meeting on December 15th, and that was optional. Um, no members of the public showed up to that meeting, uh, just the development team. Uh, and then you saw this last December. Um, you had two pieces of feedback, having, making sure the uses are consistent on-site and the adjoining land. And then, of course, ensuring proper access is provided to the proposed use to the west, which so far is going to be a self-storage. Um, this is our recommendation for the reasons set forth in the staff report. Move to recommend approval to Town Council for GP 2210 and Z 2209, subject to conditions listed in the staff report, and two modifications to conditions I and J. With I, there is, uh, a little bit of a rewording, which we ran through our legal office and were okay with that. And J is being struck out completely. So very minor revisions, um, and staff is okay with what we have presented forth. Questions?
All right, thanks, Samantha. Any questions for Samantha? Commissioner Bianchi.
Thank you, Chairs. So Samantha, um, I don't, I don't have any problems with the request. I was just more curiosity. So you said we're going to see the, the light industrial. Is that remaining for the, for the storage unit? We, we seem to be kind of doing this in a piecemeal fashion for this parcel. I'm surprised since it's all going to industrial to commercial. Is it that just because of different property owners? Or, or I'm wondering why it wasn't just done kind of at one case currently?
Um, Commissioner Bianchi, it, it does seem to be piecemeal, but that is kind of the nature of master site planning, and, uh, this particular property owner likes to go really fast. So hence why you're seeing multiple cases, um, kind of come in back-to-back and, um, yeah.
And then, so the self-storage, do we think that's going to remain LI? Since it's, I mean, it's up against the railroad tracks, or do you think that will be commercial as well?
Uh, we, it, it is going to stay LI, and, uh, self-storage is an allowed use but needs a conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, not seeing any. Do, do, would you like to comment? No? All right. Um, I don't have any public comment cards on this. Um, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on it, bring it back up to the dais. Any discussion or a motion?
The only point of discussion is that I feel like we should have had Ralph Pugh have to talk a little bit because he's my favorite orator at Planning Commission.
Well, would you like me to reopen?
But it's closed already, so, um, and it is getting late. So unless there's any other discussion, I'll make a motion. And it is getting late. So unless there's any other discussion, I'll make a motion. So it looks like there isn't any. So with that, I will make a motion. And do these have to be done separately or together? Separately.
I think separate.
Of course. I'd like to first make a motion to approve GP 22-10, Higley Industrial to Commercial.
And that's with the recommendation. Do we need the recommendation on that?
As per the recommendation of staff, or do I need to read them?
I think, I think we're good there. Correct?
Chair, the recommendation, the two edits will be read with the zoning.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So I've got a recommendation of approval by the Vice Chair for GP 22-10, Higley Industrial to Commercial. Do I have a second? Second. Commissioner Bianchi, I've got a second. Go ahead and cast votes on that. And that carries 7-0? Do I have a motion on the zoning on that?
Well, yeah, it looks like you do, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve Z 22-09, Higley Industrial Commercial, with the stipulation of removal of stipulations I and J and the addition of, "Developers shall record easements benefiting the POA for cross-access, including pedestrian, bicycle, multi-use, and trail system, purposes as determined by the final plat at the time of final plat recordation or earlier if required by the town engineer. Such easements shall be open to public access and use."
I have a motion to approve item 12 by the Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fay. Go ahead and cast your vote. And that motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to administrative items. Our for the commission, discussion of action. It is to the discretion of the majority of the commission regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on administrative item should complete a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to address. The commission may or may not accept public comment, and I do not have any public comment cards. So we'll jump. Planning Commission minutes, the minutes were in the packet, and I will entertain a motion or if there's any corrections we need.
Chairman, if you're ready for a motion, I'd move for approval of the minutes for March 1st as presented.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bianchi.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. Please cast your vote. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to communications. We don't have an executive session. Report from the chairman. Only thing I would like to say is, last night, they did recognize volunteers. I got to go because I'm the chair, for some reason, of this body. But I would like to recognize each one of you and thank you all for your volunteerism to the town of Gilbert. It is a pleasure to work with each and every one of you, so thank you very much. And then I'd also like to note, a pat on the back, that I actually went to vote on every one that I was supposed to and not called for a roll call, so. I'm getting it.
I was actually going to say that, Chairman. I was actually quite impressed.
Well, I've been practicing all week. No, just kidding. All right. Planning Services Manager, Ava, do you have anything for us?
I would like to recognize that our chair called for every vote. I would actually like to introduce two new faces at our audience. I think many of you know Erica Prater by name. She was our planning tech. She's often the first contact for many of our applicants, and she was very good at getting you all the information you needed for every hearing. She's now been promoted to Planner One, and you'll see her soon at the microphone. I'd also like to introduce Nicole Russell. She is our newest planner, our senior planner. She started with us on Monday and comes to us after about 15 years in the public sector in Mojave and Clark Counties. And she also served as a planning commissioner in the town of Prescott.
Awesome. That's great. Well, congratulations, Erica, and Nicole, welcome. And did you say 50, 50, or 15, 15?
15.
Okay. Wow, you age very well. So, all right. With that, thank you very much. We will see you all next month, May, wait, it's in here. I just can't read it without my glasses. May 3rd, I think? No, oh, yes, the 11th, we do have. And you all can jump in virtually. I think the link was sent out today. I will be here, so if any of you want to come and join me for five minutes, you're more than welcome. What's that? Oh, that's a good question. I heard Keith was bringing cookies, but. Yeah.
So Ava, that thing that we have next week, it gets, it's going to get another date, right? And we don't know when that date is? It's being continued? Is that what's going on with that?
It's up, Chairman, Commissioner, it's up in the air right now. It may be canceled completely, but we'll have, give you an update on that once we know for sure.
Okay, can you just remind me again how those things run? Like, you don't send out packets to us. We have to go in there with clear heads and not have any knowledge of what's being presented, right? Is that how that works?
I know we're supposed to have an executive session beforehand, so.
Yes, you will get an, if it does move forward, you will get an executive session, and there will be a packet with reports sent out.
Do we get the packet before we show up, and we review it like a few days beforehand?
Yes, just like you do for the regular Planning Commission hearings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we will talk to you next week, but we'll see you on May 3rd. Have a great night. Thank you, everybody.